Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the March 18th, 2013 Town Council organizational meeting. We will begin, as always, with the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we go into the oath of office and the other duties or elements of the organizational meeting, we're actually going to begin with the dedication of the annual reports of the town and the school of Newmarket. And this year, it was co-dedicated to two individuals that stand as—whose lives stand as testament to service to this community. So, do you want to begin, Joe? Vice Chair Bentley is going to read the first.
Sue, if you can come up, please. If you weren't there, I didn't know. A lifelong resident of Newmarket who dedicated many years of serving to the town, Tito was always proud to call Newmarket home. Over the years, Tito worked with a number of town boards and committees in many different capacities, either as a full-time employee, volunteer, or private citizen. Tito worked for the town as Assistant Superintendent of Public Works from the mid-sixties to 1977, which time he left town employment to work for Kingston Warren Corporation in Newfields. His many snow plowing, water main break, road construction, and other project stories from his public work days always entertained. Tito began his career with Newmarket Fire Department as a 15-year-old junior forest fire ranger. At 18, he became a regular volunteer member of the department. After serving many years, first as a firefighter, then as lieutenant in the department, he was appointed fire chief, a position he held for 18 years, the longest tenure of any chief in the history of Newmarket, until retiring from that position in 1988 and being awarded a life membership in the fire department. As fire chief, Tito helped the department through many changes, including growing to a 52-member volunteer department. He oversaw the updating of much of the department's equipment, including the replacement of all fire engines, the tanker, the addition of large diameter hose for use in areas of town without fire hydrants, and improved self-contained breathing apparatus to be used by the firefighters, just to name a few changes. During this time, Tito also worked with Kyle Gilbert to create Newmarket's first emergency dispatch center, which was, at the time, housed in the fire station. This led Tito being able to improve the radio communication equipment within the fire department and the use of pages to notify fire department personnel of needed emergency responses. Excuse me. During these years, he also helped the town develop, adopt, and implement building and fire safety regulations and codes, which led the Board of Selectment—Appointment to the town of Newmarket's first fire prevention officer. Additionally, Tito served many years as forest fire warden for the town of Newmarket. He also worked with other seacoast area fire chiefs to improve the training for all firefighters in the area, improve radio communication between the departments, and develop and implement fire mutual aid agreements between the communities. Throughout the years, after leaving the Newmarket Fire Department, Tito continued his support of the department in many activities. A special favor to his was the annual Christmas party the firefighters continue to hold for the senior citizens of Newmarket, an event started during Tito's tenure as fire chief. He also continued to support the Newmarket Handtub Association in Tiger Number One. He became an active member of the Newmarket Main Street Committee, including helped spearhead and oversee the committee's restoration project of the engine house on Main Street. He served as a member of Newmarket Heritage Committee for many years and was named Keeper of the Heritage at the 2008 Heritage Fest. In his free time, Tito enjoyed fishing and oystering, golfing, snow shoeing, skiing, attending UNH football and hockey games, working in his yard, traveling, spending time at his camp in Pittsburgh, New Hampshire, and sharing stories of the history of New Market in the Newmarket Fire Department. This was our honor to present this to Sue, his wife, the dedication of the book. And as someone who has worked with Tito at Kingston Warren and might have had a drink in the sky off of Pittsburgh a few times, I can attest what a great gentleman he was.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
He's coming up. Is it you? How you doing? The second individual that the town report and school report is dedicated to is Don Small. And I will read what the—what it says. "Don Small's life is a monument to service, service to community, to state, and to nation. It is in commemoration of his life and in honor of his service that this year's annual report is dedicated to him. While born in Lynn, Massachusetts, he spent virtually his entire life as a resident of Newmarket, a graduate of Newmarket High School's class of 1952"—John Bentley's father's class, as well. "Don entered the United States Air Force that same year and served for four years, receiving an honorable discharge in 1956. Upon returning to Newmarket, he began working at Portsmouth Naval Shipyard in the Apprentice Program. He worked as a draftsman and electrician in the Design Division and moved to the Crane Division of the Public Works Department, where he retired in 1989. Don served honorably for over 40 continuous years as a member of Robert G. Durgan American Legion Post 67 here in Newmarket. Don served in multiple capacities—post adjutant, post commander, district commander, and department commander, the highest rank achievable in the state," to name a few. However, no matter where he served, he remained active in and committed to Newmarket. Don was a tireless advocate for our community and our veterans and their families. Don was particularly dedicated to the Children and Youth Program, taking it as his personal mission to help transmit to posterity the principles of justice, freedom, and democracy. He was integral in the high school oratorical program that grants scholarships for exceptional public speaking, in the Newmarket eighth grade awards, and the Boys and Girls Stage Programs. Don was also the Legion representative and one of the primary organizers of the town Memorial Day Parade. To say Don was involved in these service activities does not paint an accurate picture. Don lived and breathed service. He gave of himself and his time to help those in need and to help secure a brighter future for our community in unparalleled fashion. Don took on each and every helping task with the energy and commitment that would have you believing it was his sole priority, despite having multiple other commitments to which he gave the same energy and dedication. Don's life was based on the simple premise of helping others. Don's passing this year came as a blow to the community and to his family, most of who still live here in Newmarket. Don loved Newmarket, not simply the streets and places where he grew up and lived his life, but the people that make up our community. Newmarket was fortunate to have such a dedicated resident working to help his neighbors across our community. His legacy lives as an example of the foundations of a strong community, a life committed to comradeship and devotion to mutual helpfulness."
Thanks, Phil.
Thank you very much. I just—I want to say, just real quickly, I would not be standing here if it wasn't for Don Small. So, I owe a personal debt of gratitude to him as well. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the oath of office. Becky and the councilors-elect.
I'd like you to come up front. If you would raise your right hand. Do you, Larry Pickering and Dale Pike of Newmarket, solemnly swear that you will bear faith and true allegiance to the United States of America and the State of New Hampshire and support the constitutions thereof, so help you God? And do you, Larry Pickering and Dale Pike of Newmarket, solemnly and sincerely swear and affirm that you will faithfully and impartially perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the Newmarket Town Council, according to the best of your abilities, agreeably to the rules and regulations of this Constitution, the laws of the State of New Hampshire, and the articles of the Newmarket Town Charter, so help you God? Congratulations.
Counselors, you've got to come up here. Former counselors are just waiting in the audience. For those—yeah, don't feel like you have to stay a much. Thank you very much.
Thank you. See you later. Hey, good luck there. See Patty.
Bye, Lee.
See you, Josh. See you later.
Next item on the agenda is the appointment of—or the election—this is appointment—election of chair and vice chair. No, that comes after. So, I will accept nominations for chair of the town council.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion for Council Levy for chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other nominations? Seeing none, any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Administrator of the vote?
Council Wright?
Aye.
Council Levy?
Aye.
Council Pickering?
Aye.
Council Pike?
Aye.
Council Carmichael?
Aye.
Council Bentley?
Aye.
Council Mizaro?
Nay. Motion passes six to one. Council Levy, you have the chair. Or Chairman Levy.
They say be careful for what you wish for. Do I have anyone who would like to make a motion for vice chair, please?
I'd like to make a motion for Council Bentley, vice chair.
Any other nominations? Town Administrator, could you please call the vote?
Council Wright?
Aye.
Council Mizaro?
Aye.
Council Pickering?
Aye.
Council Pike?
Aye.
Council Carmichael?
Aye.
Council Bentley?
Aye.
Council Levy?
Aye. Next on the agenda is the presentation of plaques. And I'm assuming we would start with Counselor Zink and LeBranche, correct? Okay. So, let me go up. Excuse me. Counselor LeBranche and Zink, please come up.
What goes up first, things first?
Gary, your color's getting much better.
I think that's for you. I would just like to say to both Counselor LeBranche and Zink that I appreciate all the time you've both donated to the town and the effort you've given to town council. You know, since I've been in Newmarket, I've seen a lot of people donate a lot of time and a lot of volunteerism to the town. And I don't think people fully understand and appreciate the amount of time and effort and due diligence that people put into things. And for that, I thank you. And I appreciate your serving the town for as many years as you have, Mike. And same to you, Al. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Anything to say?
I do. Actually, I do.
Oh, good.
Hey, Mike, you have to hang around for a speech.
You've got to say something, too.
I certainly have.
You start. I can't—I can't leave without saying something, because I always say something. I think the—the council, since—at least since I went on it, has had some rocky moments and bumpy moments. And I think they were good moments for the council. I think it—it—it has resulted in a—certainly a diverse, but excellent council. And I mean that to the person. I think—I think the new members—not that you're new, Larry, but new this time. And Dale, I know you personally and know you're going to be great for the council. And I never really understood when people left, they said, "It's been a pleasure to serve." But I do now. It's a big job. It is a pleasure. And thank you all. And I do want to say something about Mike. Mike, for the first year or so, really helped me out a ton, learning—well, he didn't always teach me what not to say, obviously. But he was my mentor during the first year. And Dale, I hope you'll find one. It—it really, really helps to—to have—have somebody that's balanced and has that perspective. And I enjoy every one of you. Thanks.
Well, that being said, number six on the agenda is a resolution for the first reading of—let's see—Resolution 2012-13-50, scheduling a special election for the Charter Commission. And I'm going to ask the—I guess the town administrator is going to request to suspend the rules.
Correct.
Do we need to vote on that, Steve?
It needs to be two-thirds vote.
Okay.
I move to suspend the rules.
Do I hear a second? Good. Hold on a second.
Sorry.
Nope. Nope. No problem. We voted to suspend the rules regarding the Charter Commission. So—
We have to do the rule call for the—
Yeah, I was going to say.
Yeah, okay.
So, would you please call the vote?
Council Wright?
Aye.
Council Mizaro?
Aye.
Council Pickering?
Aye.
Council Carmichael?
Aye.
Council Bentley?
Aye.
Do I have to read the resolution?
That's right.
Okay. Would you—is that appropriate?
Yeah.
Okay. The town of Newmarket, by the town—by the Newmarket Town Council Resolution, 2012-13-50, scheduling a special election for the Charter Commission. Whereas at the March 12, 2013, town election, the voters approved the creation of a Charter Commission to review the town charter, and whereas, in accordance with RSA 49B, semi-colon, four, the town council shall meet within five days of the deadline for a recount and schedule a special election on a Tuesday no less than 23 days nor more than 133 days after such meeting for the purpose of electing nine Charter Commission members. And whereas Tuesday, May 14, being the second Tuesday in May coincides with the schedule, now therefore, let it be resolved that the Town Council of the town of Newmarket does hereby order a special election to be held on Tuesday, May 14, 2013, from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the Newmarket Town Hall for the purpose of electing a Charter Commission. First reading, March 18, 2013. And it has here second reading, March 18, 2012, and approval, March 18, 2013. So, I don't know if there was a—those dates were all—
They're supposed to say that, yeah.
Okay. And we've already voted on it, so—
No, you—now you've got to vote to pass it.
Oh, okay. Oh, I see. We—got it. Got it. Do I have a motion to pass this resolution? Second?
Second.
Discussion?
How do we—
Yeah. Phil?
How do we have—
Excuse me.
Yeah. How's my Mizaro? Sorry. How do we have—a—it's a lot harder to be formal when there's no one in the audience. How do we have the first reading and second reading on the same day?
That's why you voted to suspend the rules to—
I thought we voted to suspend the rules to have—the vote to suspend the rules was to have this read during an organizational meeting as opposed to a regular meeting. Correct?
I—my understanding was to suspend the rules to act on it this evening. That was what I thought was the motion was. I'd have to double-check with them.
Well, I made the motion. So, I mean, I'm not going to—
Yeah.
I'm not going to be sticking about it, but I just wanted to make—
Yep. You could—I mean, if you—you could go for it—
We're fine just having one reading.
Absolutely. Yep.
Any other—any other questions with respect to the charter?
I just have one quick one, which is—I kept hearing that there were 12 members, which is, you know—it's okay with me, but is it—
It's nine, yes.
Actually, nine?
Yes.
Because for some reason, the number 12 had been mentioned before. So, nine makes more sense, obviously, if there's a deadlock.
Yeah.
And just one other quick question. When the Charter Commission finishes its—its duty, is—does the town then have to vote on the decision of the Charter Commission? Or is the Charter Commission then by definition law?
No. The—the Charter Commission would make recommendations to the charter, and it would be on next March ballot to any changes. So, the people do get to vote on it. It's not law.
Okay. And it's a simple majority vote?
Yep.
Just for—everyone's correct.
By—by each item or the whole charter in itself?
It—it actually depends. From my understanding, it could depend on how much it is, but usually, it's the whole charter. But say if you had different—if it's not a overall change, you could do separate ones. But if it's one line—if you—if you change the charter as a whole, then you do—are you in favor of adopting the amended town charter? Depending—it depends on what you're going to get for a final product.
Not to belabor it, but just so we're all—because I just want to be clear for the constituents out there and frankly, myself. So, if there is—there are some things that—because we don't really have a deliberative session with respect to the Charter Commission, or do we? For example, at the—the deliberative session, people can make changes or tweak—
No, right.
The budgets, et cetera. So, if the budget—if the Charter Commission comes out with a specific position—
Mm-hmm.
—whatever that may be, or positions. And some people feel good about 80% of it, want to change 20%, or whatever the— Is there any room there for—so, it's either—you either pass it or you don't pass it?
Correct.
And—and in the event that should it fail, just for sake of knowing this, does that mean we just—it's—we—we wait another 10 years, or we put it on the ballot in another year and hopefully—to—what I—what I guess I'm really getting at is, is there an ability to tweak the charter, you know, the charter, if it looks like people have concerns about certain parts of it? That's what I'm trying to—
Yes. If—say, for example, the Charter Commission comes up with a whole host of different amendments. And there's one question that says you're in favor of the amendments that's proposed by the Charter Commission. And for some reason, there's one item in there that's not popular, and it fails at the polls next year. The council on—on their own can actually come up with charter amendments, say if there's like—the other articles are okay.
Okay.
You can propose that for the following election. This is just gives it for an independent group to have a look at the charter from top to bottom.
Okay. And last—anybody in? Just the last question. If—they're going to be having public meetings, and I'm assuming—
That's correct.
So, if there—if there's some tweaking that can be done theoretically, it could be done at those public meetings. Meaning, the public would give input—
Correct.
And if they wanted to make amendments or adjustments to what—what they're—if they—if they wanted to, for example, weigh in and maybe make it more palatable to the voters to pass, that could be done by having public input. And then, the Charter Commission could then make those changes in and of itself, theoretically.
Correct. The—the Charter Commission will have to have public hearings throughout the process to accept input from the people. At the end, it's—it—but at the end, it's the Charter Commissioners who put the—the questions forward.
Okay. Right. Yeah, go ahead.
And if this passes, just to let everybody know, that the candidate filing period will be March 27 through April 5 for commissioners.
Okay. Excuse me? Yeah. Counsel Carmichael.
Sorry.
The people that can be on this—if you were on, say, the Budget Committee, I know the Town Council can be on it. How about the other councils—budget, planning? Could you—
We—actually, we're double-checking on the eligibility of the councilors to be on it. But every other committee, yes, you can serve. If you're a Budget Committee member, you can just run for this.
So—oh, John—Counsel Bentley, I'm sorry. I apologize. I'm not used to calling on people.
Would we need the voting machine this day for this? Or would that be when we would count—
Well, the March—the next March meeting—
Sorry, Ben.
We will be using the voting machine, because this will be voted on at the next March annual town election.
No, no, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. For the—for the Tuesday, May 14 election of these—
That—that's an option that—in the past, for special elections, we have not used the voting machine, just to save the expense—
And that's what I was asking. I would hope that we would go that—
We would do hand counting of the ballots.
Okay. Thank you. That's what—I—that's all I'm trying to say.
Becky, can you just answer one other question? Has there—do you have a rough idea of what the turnout's been in the past for these types of special—
Special elections—
Just ballpark.
Have historically been pretty low.
Okay.
Less than the average attendance for a town election. The attendance at this town election was 1339, and they've historically been less than that.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just hard to get all the—you know, to get the information out, to—to get into everybody's hands and to make everyone aware. And this is coming up pretty rapidly.
And then, when we—when we do the count, just for everyone in the public, and I think our knowledge, because it's sort of new to us, we count it in conjunction with all the other folks that were down, counting the night—you know, when we did the ballots?
Right. The election officials would be the ones to count the ballots. Yes.
Okay. Very good. Any other questions? So, you'll get back to us probably—do you think we can get that by Wednesday, just so we can clarify who can—who can vote?
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, who can put their name in the hat, so to speak? Very good. Okay.
You voted to suspend the rules, but—
Oh. Do I have a motion to—
You already made a motion.
Okay.
Just got to do the role.
Okay. Call the roll.
Council Wright?
Aye.
Council Mizaro?
Aye.
Council Pickering?
Aye.
Council Pike?
Aye.
Council Carmichael?
Aye.
Council Bentley?
Aye.
Now, we have the rules for the council, which I do not assume I am going to be reading, because they're multiple pages. So, I'm just—should I just read the header, or—
My understanding is this is more for—for informational purposes. And if the council has any requests for changes, then we could amend this and put it on for a regular business meeting.
Okay. So, so just so, you know, this is for the town of Newmarket, New Hampshire, the Town Council Resolution, 2012-13-17, relating to the establishment of rules for the council proceedings. So, has everyone had an opportunity to review these? They were in the—in the packet, obviously. Yes, no, maybe?
I have not.
Would people—I—I only have one suggestion for it, but does anybody else have any suggestions? Or—I think last year, some of the questions that John—or, excuse me, Council—Vice Chair Bentley had were with respect to downstairs, you know, when we had meetings and whatnot. And we left—we left the rules the same, basically using council chambers as the official place of business. Other than that, I don't think we changed, or we really did anything to these rules. Does—I mean, does anybody have any—
I have a call on the computer.
Okay.
Where are we on here? I haven't even—
We're on pa—I think we're on page eight, correct?
No, yeah.
Eight, nine?
Eight.
I mean, we can do one of two things. We can either discuss it now, or we can table it and discuss it at our next meeting. It's basically the rules that we run the council on. And I—I think there was a handout as well. Counsel Mizaro?
What? What are the changes between this and last year?
These are the rules that you adopted in, I believe, October, that—and there are no changes in there.
No changes.
There are no changes. But if there were proposed changes, then I guess this is an opportunity to ask for any changes, and we can propose them in a future meeting. These are the current ones that are in place.
Or—or we could discuss them tonight and vote on them tonight if we chose to, couldn't we?
Yeah.
Does anybody have any suggestions or concerns about the—the rules as to the way we run the meetings, proceedings? Vice Chair Bentley?
Shame on me. I was out of town and did not read these, and I don't—if it was a handout, it wasn't a handout for me. But I would say, seeing we voted on them in October, nothing's changed, then seeing I voted then, I think I would have brought it up then. So, I'm fine with what it is.
Okay. Well, whether we vote on it tonight or not, anybody else have any comments? There's only one—one thought I had, which was with respect to public comment. And I spoke to the town administrator about it, just to make sure it was consistent with what other towns do, and that it was an appropriate way to conduct meetings.[1778.23] What I was thinking was, we could have public comment in the beginning of the meetings for five minutes. Presently, the way we do it is, it's on non-agenda items only. And what I was hoping to do was insert, whether it's an agenda item or a non-agenda item. That way, if the public has something that they want to bring up with respect to an agenda item, they can bring it up. They don't have to wait potentially an hour into the meeting. The council, obviously, will get their opinion. We can take that into consideration. And in the event that someone does want to bring some information forward when we get to that agenda item, I believe currently, we have the ability, or the chair has the ability, to allow them to speak, if I'm correct. If what I went over was consistent.
Yes, there's no objection from the council.
Yeah. So that was my only recommendation, because I think it might help to speed up the meetings, and I think it will give us a little bit more public input at times.
Could you just concisely say that one more time?
What I was hoping to do is give people at the beginning of our meetings five minutes to speak to either agenda or non-agenda items. Presently, we only allow people to speak to non-agenda items.
So the real change is to change it to, you can speak to agenda or non-agenda items?
Yes.
So this actually does?
In a five-minute limit.
Well, this actually just says public forum. It doesn't actually limit it to non-agenda items.
Okay. Well, and I, I brought this up earlier with Steve, and I just, and, because that's fine with me. I, what my question was to Steve was, do we really have to change this to do that? Because it's, you know, when I got on the council, we, I believe we only allowed public comment at one of our meetings. I can't, I think it was a workshop, but I could be wrong. And then last year, we opened it up, which I thought was a good thing, to workshop and business meetings. And what I'm looking to do is just open it up that one more step. I think it's respectful to people that may not want to sit for two hours, but want to get a point across. And I think it allows us to get input that we might not otherwise get. And that was my only thought, so. People don't have a problem with it. That's how I would conduct the meetings. Counselor?
I think you mean five minutes per person?
Yes.
To address that. And does it have to say, does it say five minutes per person in here now? And does it need to, or should it?
No, but it's sort of a general, you know, I don't know, you know, Steve, I would defer to you. I mean, frankly, you know, when, the boards I've served on in the past, it's generally five minutes. I think it's a reasonable amount of time to give people. I don't think it's too long. I think it's reasonable. I think three minutes might be a little draconian. And that's not my goal. My goal is to let people speak to the, to the subjects that we're discussing here and get the input, so. But I guess my question is, to the town administrator, do you feel that any of these need to be inserted or voted on? Because if they don't, we can just let it roll the way it is.
From reading the current rules, there is nothing that says by agenda, non-agenda items only. I think that's just past practice?
Okay.
Of the council. So it can be opened up for anything? And as for time limits, that's, that's, the five minutes are already in there?
Counsel Nazaro?
Is, where is the five minutes in here? Because the way I read it, on the third page of the resolution, it just has the list of the order of business, and does not have a time restriction. I think it's just, again, been sort of common practice, that we limit it to five minutes.
I think you used to say, excuse me, I think Counsel Nazaro, you would bring it up?
Yeah.
When speakers get up there, that it's five minutes.
Counsel Bentley?
I read it as a freshman counsel, though. So it's either in Robert's rules, or it's somewhere. I remember reading, reading that when I started. Sorry.
Let me, section, section 12, while it has permission to address the council, it limits five minutes without?
What page are you on, please?
I'm actually looking at different, I'm looking at the original document. So section 12 is?
Okay, yeah.
But that's for items?
Permission to address the council.
Outside of public forum.
Comments by members of the public outside of the public forum shall be confined outside of the public forum, so.
My recommendation would be that you amend this to state five minute, to, that during the public forum, to basically, we could put forward an amendment that would say persons, other members of the town council and town office shall be permitted to address the council at the sole discretion of the chair. Comments by members, and just take outside the, outside the public forum, and just say, limited no more than five minutes.
Counsel Nazaro?
After running the meetings for a year, people probably know my opinion on this. I don't like the concept of limiting people. I understand it's to the chair's discretion if someone's going on, and on, and on, and saying, okay, cut it off. But I do like the idea of having limited during non-public forum, because then, like, Larry's a good example. There's times where we'd be talking about something, he'd be in the audience, we'd call him up. So he wouldn't get to take over the meeting and do a presentation, but he'd have five minutes to have, to edify on some things that the councilors sitting here at the time didn't really understand.
Yeah. And my intent was to still allow for that. So if, if, just for sake of a hypothetical, if we have public input at the beginning of a meeting, and three or four people get up and speak, and then the agenda item is an hour and a half into the meeting, and someone has germane information that they would want to bring toward the council, and we, and I think it's at the discretion of the chair, at least that's what it's been in past practice. I don't think we voted on it to allow the person to speak. I certainly am not the type of person in general that would say no, unless it was just being repeated over and over again. But I think five minutes is a pretty reasonable amount of time, just my personal opinion, to, to get someone's point across. And I think it's pretty consistent with most of the meetings I've been involved with. I don't, I can't speak for other people here. Consequently.
One thing is, I think we've come a long way in the meetings of last year. You know, certainly Counsel Nazaro should be commended for that, and Mr. Fornia, you know, we've come a long way in the three years I've been here. I guess the one issue, I would think, and it would only happen maybe when there's some really hot topics here. I guess my fear is, if something's on, and I certainly appreciate someone sitting there forever to come up and speak for two sentences. You know, I feel bad, whether it's an outsider, or the chief of police, or Mr. Malaski stays here, and he's item 11, and, you know, it's 10 o'clock. And I guess my one fear is, if it's an item five or six deep on the agenda, and one person gets up to speak of it, and for instance, the rezoning is a good example, there's a lot of people here. And then the next person speaks, and then the next person speaks. So you could literally, you know, that night, we had several speak. It would eliminate the ones that did double, triple, quadruple speak, certainly. And that's a good thing. But you could have seven or eight people that go up and do their five minutes, and now we're the start of the meeting, and we're 40 minutes into it. I know I'm giving worst-case scenario, but we've had a few worst-case scenarios here with some big items, and we're not even at item one. And I'm thinking of Recuper sitting here with her kids, or someone else sitting here that, you know, an outside company coming to do a presentation or speak to us, or, and waiting before we even got to agenda item number one, I guess. And I don't know how we get away from that, if we say, you know, if it's a nightly thing to allow it or not. But I guess that's my one fear. Six, seven, eight, nine people that want to come up and speak before we're even to item number one. I guess, that's my only question.
You mean to speak to an agenda item?
To speak to an agenda item, right. And we haven't, in other words, we're not even at agenda item number one, and these six people want to talk about, you know, agenda item number eight. Anyway, that's my only question.
Any other input from people?
Have you seen what I'm talking about, where you've been? You've seen these, has that?
I've seen, yeah, a lot of councils have, do have time limits on.
Time limit thing, but my issue, if we, I mean, am I off-base? Am I crazy? Have you seen that happen, where there can be items and everyone's talking before you?
The problem usually then is, though, it actually drags it out longer if you allow the comments during, I guess you're saying, move things around on the agenda to let people go earlier or later. But sometimes that actually draws the meeting out longer versus having comments by visitors at the beginning in a public forum. Because if you have it in the middle, people tend to sit there for the whole meeting, and they may not know that other individuals may be saying something that is similar, so they still feel like they need to talk. But if you do it all at once, usually that sort of, it keeps it more tight.
I can give you a personal, does anybody else have it? I can give you a personal example. When, when I was on the P's Development Board, there were some pretty controversial meetings with respect to rust dust over the board. And, you know, we had 30 people plus, and they all wanted to speak. They were concerned about what was going on at the court. And, you know, they had their time, they spoke. The council then, or the council, it was really more of a Board of Trustees or whatever deliberated, and that was it. You know, you got their input, and then, you know, the directors, actually, it was Board of Directors, did their deliberation. Personally, I think it would move the meetings along, in general, a little quicker. And I, you know, I've watched, I've been here now two years, and I've seen people who wanted to speak to agenda items that couldn't at times. I've seen people have to wait, you know, an hour or two into the meetings. That's primarily why I brought it up. And I guess my thought is, we could certainly try it, and if it looked like it was causing the meetings to get drawn out, or causing problems, we could always change directions. But I think in general, you know, I felt like there had been times that I would have liked to have seen a public input earlier. And it's hard sometimes for somebody to have to sit for an hour or two, you know, to get to an agenda item. So that was my thought on it. Counsel Nazaro?
So, understanding that, and I appreciate, especially, giving people the ability to speak to agenda items. If the way the resolution's already written allows us to do that, and just gives you the ability to do it as the chair, and you, like, as you just said, maybe in six months, we want to say, if this isn't working, why would we change the resolution if all you have to do is change the, what you would do as chair to, in six months? You know what I'm saying? If we change the resolution now, if we want to change it ever again, we'd have to go back to the resolution.
Well, like, I guess my question is, do we have to change anything? If we want, if we want?
I think we do.
Public comment, yeah. Then what I would, then what I would, I certainly didn't want to do this without discussing with the council. So it would, that would be my preference, as far as starting the meetings, you know, for this year. And if it looks like it's going to draw them out, or if it's exasperating, then we'll just shift gears. So as long as we don't have to change, that was really the nexus of my question. Do we have to change this resolution or this, the rules? And if we don't, then I would just let the public know that if they have something they want to speak to, come in. And I would like to limit it to the five minutes in general, unless there's some extenuating circumstance. I don't think we've had people, frankly, come in in the beginning of the meetings and go more than five minutes in general, anyway. Vice Chair Bentley?
I have no button. Can we get this fixed, Mr. Chair? Can we get this fixed? And I guess that would, that would, because we've had the discretion, anyway. So my point about, if tonight was a presentation, certainly, we shouldn't have Mr. Small, Mr. Boyer's family sit there through all that. If Recuper's group, the Link Together group was here, I wouldn't want to see them sit through. So I guess, just like in the past, we could say at the beginning?
There you go.
Instead of the public comment, before we do that, we're going to listen to the Link Together kids, and we're going to have a special presentation, and we're going to, I guess that was my thing. Certainly, in the spirit of not wanting other people to wait, but there's some other groups, we certainly, you know, the Boston Kane Award, we don't want to have them wait two hours. So I guess that's my piece. That's fine.
That would be my preference. If we have someone, if we have, you know, 12 kids in the, in the audience, or we're giving a plaque or something, then we can do that at the beginning of the meeting. Then we can have public comment, and just see how it goes. I mean, frankly, I think, you know, the more input we get, the better off we are, in general.
I mean, why can't the agenda be set up in a way that you take into fact the people that probably should speak first and move on?
I think that's.
Because it's kind of, if I could just, it just seems to me, no matter who
you let go ahead of someone else, it kind of unfair to everyone behind them for not being able to have the same privilege.
Well, I, yeah, go ahead. We normally do when we're setting the agenda. Also, that if there's something on there, I know I've talked to, Counsel Nazaro was chair, that he would say, if there's no objection, we'd like to take this thing out of order once in a while, especially if it was like a presentation like that. So I know, I think it's a, you know, when I look at the agenda, when we're setting it on a weekly basis, we also look, I look at the ordering as well. Because you don't want to have the presentation at the end. You want to have more of the routine business at the end, so people there who want to watch it are there at the beginning, so we can get them out sooner.
I think we've done that.
So for the most part, it's already been done.
We're doing that, anyway, in general, I think. I mean, we've moved the agenda around multiple times to, you know, help people out. Yeah.
Yeah. It tends to be when there's, like, awards are going out with the kids from Link Together or here, or something like that. That's really where the motion is.
Yeah. I would ask for a little discretion, and if it looks like it's causing problems, then we can always turn around. But my main goal was to not, to not, A, stifle what people could speak to. That's, you know, frankly, that's, that was my goal. So as long as it's okay in general, we can review it. And if it looks like it's becoming a problem, then we can always shift gears, since we're not going to change the rules. So, is, that being said, can we, does, do people want to vote on the rules that we have, or do you want to take the time to review them and vote on it at the next meeting? I mean, we've been running by these rules now for like, I think, three years, other than some very small changes, I think. No?
We did, we did a significant update in October.
Yeah, but I mean, other than that, that change, we've been running with the same, I mean, if we really?
Yeah, this is, because in October, you introduced the two readings of the ordinances, the, actually, the more formality of the council meetings. Before that, it was more one reading you voted on every meeting. So October was a shift. My, my other recommendation would be, actually have these phrases, the standing rules of the town council. So that way, you don't have to every year adopt new rules. They're just the standing rules, and you can amend them whenever you need to be.
Okay. So is that going to require a change, or is it just going to leave it the way it is?
If somebody just makes a motion to adopt these as the standing rules of the town council, that could be done.
I make a motion that we adopt these as the standing rules of the town council.
Here, a second.
Second.
Any discussion on it? Want to call the vote?
Counsel Wright?
Aye.
Counsel Nazaro?
Aye.
Counsel Pickering?
Aye.
Counsel Pike?
Aye.
Counsel Carmichael?
Aye.
Counsel Bentley?
Aye.
Counsel Levy?
Aye. So the goals have been accepted, or not the goals, but the, the rules have been accepted, so we don't have to move that.